Call a joint meeting of the county commissioners and the school board education to order. They will rise for invocation.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly father, we thank you again for another day. We thank you for your gracious blessings upon us here in Allegheny County. We have so much to be thankful for. We thank you for assembling this other board with us today that we can work together for the betterment of our community and for the children of this county. For these and these things, we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
You want to do a pledge without a flag?
What do we pledge to?
I don't know, that's what I'm thinking. We ain't got one.
Where's the flag?
We don't have one.
Court ready.
We laundered it.
Court. Do it. Welcome, everybody. It's always good to have joint meetings and talk. Okay. All right, Don, I'll turn it over to you to call yours out. Moving on, Mr. Bees, are you presenting or him to the budget or? I don't have agenda in front of me. Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said I didn't know this was a budget presentation. I thought we were...
Long-term goals and short-term. That's good. Yeah, that's what we're talking about, is long-term, short-term.
Now, we talked about a few of our capital needs this year if you wanted to. We've got that, but I didn't know this was a...
We're coming up on that in the budget here next week, I guess, ain't we?
It'll be in the next couple of weeks.
Let's discuss your long range and...
This is not long range, this is next year, you know, next year's needs. I did bring a copy just in case you asked, but like I said, I didn't know it was a budget presentation. I thought it was just discussing needs for the future, to be honest with you. Of course, the Lake Creek School, we got the principal payment there. It'll be number 11 of 14.
Mr. Bees, you want to go up to the podium, Maris, being...
Sure, sure. Same as what I'm seeing on the board here. There we go. Thank you. Do what? So, I'll just hit a little bit of the capital, some of our capital needs. Of course, Lake Creek School, we got 11 of 14, so that payment's almost paid off. We got a big need down at Sparta Gym. Right now, of course, there is no HVAC down there, and there's about 10 heaters up in the ceiling trying to heat that gym. It's, you know, we checked the temperature in there a lot this year over the winter time, and it was about as warm as it'd get, would be about 54 degrees in there. So, we've got to do something there, so we've got that in the budget this year. Roof at the fieldhouse, it's got to be fixed. It's time. Roof at Lake Creek School has got to be fixed. It's bowed. We've made some adjustments on it. It's bowed, water sits on it about a foot deep in many areas of it, so that's got to be fixed. The roof in the Ag Building is another one. As you can see, there's lots of roof projects, you know, and this range is not helping anymore. We've taken care of, I mean, the roofs this year, Mr. Carter, already.
We got two out of the way this year.
Two out of the way this year. The band room at the high school. And, of course, we always have HVAC change outs in there, and we're putting together numbers right now, but we have a large list of the HVAC change outs that... A lot of those units are 20 to 25 years old, so we've got a strong idea that those are going to be needing to be replaced. We've replaced three already this year and could be more. So, it's a total of $810,200. It's a little more than we asked for last year. But, again, this is just a request. We know this may not be what we're getting, but, you know, our biggest needs right now are the roofs, and we've got to get some kind of heat in Sparta Gym, and easiest way to do that is with an HVAC package in there. All of our gyms in Piney, Glade, High School all have HVAC air conditioning in there. It's a big good opportunity while we're doing this to put that in there as well, so... Yeah.
Are those your own estimates or those contractor estimates?
Contractor estimates.
Contractor estimates.
Yeah.
They're not locked down, they're just... They gave us a ballpark.
Yeah, they're often contractors, though. Yeah, it's not our guesses.
It looked about like 500 in roofs.
Yeah. Close to it. Any questions on that, or?
Like a county, you've got plenty of roofing. Plenty of roofing needs.
Well, I think contractor that was used a few years ago before some of us came into these positions was used and...
When you get back.
I'm sorry. Several. We've been putting $50,000 in, we went $35,000 because we've got that many that's...
When you do that, you've got to bring it up to IDA.
IDA coach.
Yep, and so, you know, but all together, all those projects together is a little... But we were very fortunate to get a grant this week, notified us about $600,000.
I was hoping that the state would be able to...
Yep.
Help, knowing that, you know, they're helping already with a whole lot of other stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, very nice guy, and he was extremely helpful, extremely helpful, so...
Going back to your roof, how bad a shape of the roof seem to me? Is it leaking or...
Water runs in them, yeah. Yeah, we patch them best we can, but, you know, those old roofs, they stretch and they pull away from the wall and they'll flap. Wind, like this wind's coming in, it's going to hurt tonight, you know.
All flat roof?
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be running down the walls in some areas, so...
What are you going back with?
I don't know.
We have a guy from DPI that come in, and he's their roofing guy, and he will come in and evaluate all of them, and he'll bid as many as we can get next year out and do them as a group. Specifications, most of the time it will be flat.
The Glade Creek, if it's bowing that much, you're going to have to... Total replacement?
It's not going to be total, but it's really where there's low spots and we can't get water off of it.
Yeah.
So, they just redid the one on the high school gym. It was kind of the same situation, and they put some angle on it to get the water off, and the company that has been... The roofing projects has done the last three or four we've had, we've had no problems with, and the service is good, so... Dr. Cox's group. Hoping that's the same group we use coming up.
You put a new roof over to college and BDC and library, and it's all one solid, there's no seams.
Right.
And that'd be Sherwin-Williams, wouldn't it?
It was a product, but it wasn't a company.
Right.
Yeah, we've put a roof on the gym down at Sparta, 7th and 8th grade building, gym at the high school. What else we, Mr. Carter?
They put new drains in at Glade Creek to get part of that water off.
Yeah, yeah, we have water standing, you know, on the roof.
It's a lot of weight.
Yes, it is.
So, where you're talking about the low spot or the low roofs, what do they do in taking the membrane off and building up under that?
Some of it's got to have repairs.
Some of it's got to have repairs underneath it, yeah.
Structure repairs even below that where it's come down?
That's why, that's one of the bigger cost out of Glade.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any more questions? What's up next?
Well, let's see what we've got here, Bill. We...
What roof you want to talk about there?
Well, you know... Let me look, see if there's anything here or there that really stands out to me, or is anything that stood out to you guys on this? If you've... Have you got, have y'all had a copy of that? Have y'all looked at it? Yeah. John's got a copy there.
It was sent to us in an email, and I requested a printed copy.
Okay, all right. You know, we're always going to come to you, and we've always been good steeds of your money. We've always spent it the way we're second going to spend it, and if we have to make changes, we've always let you know that. You know, we're going to request what we think we...
It's always going to be what you may give us, but what you do give us, we will use it to our ability and then the best to run our school system with and facilities and upgrade them when we can and take care of the needs, you know. And we've got some paving projects we need to do. We actually had them on here when we originally started designing our budget, and we took those off because roofs are more priority than those. We did do some patchwork this past year, but we do have some...
Cause roofs are more priorities than those, we, we done, we did do some patchwork this past year, but, uh, we do have some, some extremely heavy needs in some, in some, uh, paving areas.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Daisy, I just, just comparing, you, you prepared the twenty-one and the twenty, you included the twenty with it. I was just curious on the twenty in the current year, I don't see a huge overlap outside of your, your loan payments or your, you know, those type of things. Are, are all of these other items that was identified in twenty, have they been taken care of or?
Have you got somewhere to pull that up, Mr. Carter?
Uh.
Nah. Yeah, the, um, that's it right there. Yeah, the media, the roof on the media center at the high school's been taken care of, of course, Glade Creek payment's been made, uh. The silver coating on the, uh, torch, torch down rods, roofs have been done, the electronic lock replacement, we've actually done those at all the schools. Uh, we actually added cameras at Piney Creek, uh, Glade, the high school and the central office and updated all of those. Um, we had, we had that quote from another company, we did a little checking around, we found out we could. Get a little better, we, we, we used those funds, but we, uh, we were able to do more buildings and so we took care of all of that, cause this is the first time that Piney, Piney Creek's had, had cameras and, uh, and the lock system. So, all of those have been taken care of, uh.
The, uh, the drop ceiling is, is to do on a rainy day, they've got it in the shop, everything else is done, they're working on the sidewalks at Sparta for the ADA. That's about half finished, should finish next week, the only thing that's changed that didn't complete is the, uh, the paving. And that's the money after the earthquake that we, um, held on to, to see what we had to pay out of pocket for repairs. And we did the patchwork at Sparta, so the, the paving is the only thing that, that we haven't completed.
We had, um, we had, uh, the, both the stairwells and the seventh, eighth grade building come away from the wall and collapsed a little bit. So, that, that, that was shut down and shut off when school started, so we had to have that fixed, so that's what, that's what Mr. Carter's talking about, we used those funds, we just kept, we just took the paving off. We did do the patchwork, we had the worst holes, I think we want to spend about twenty, twenty to, twenty to thirty thousand dollars of that for those fat paving, but. You know, we, we, we fiddled them with some gravel here and there, but, uh, we had, we had to make the repairs for the earthquake because it's, it's been a slow process, especially with the insurance company.
Have you got further damage after the earthquakes and aftershocks, you know, this, a few thirds ago, they had a pretty good one, did you receive more damage?
Yeah, we had, like, you know, I'll give you an example of the, like, the, uh, chimney on, on Sparta school down there, the cracks that we've got in it. Uh, when it first, when it first happened, it just ran down the chimney, now it's actually down in the classroom where it goes on down to the, to the bottom, it's, it's. It's probably cracked down in that, in that room about another two, almost three feet down through, through the wall of that room.
Is your insurance gonna pick up on that or is it?
Twenty-five thousand deducted.
That's what I was asking, per time?
Per, per building.
Per, per building, but not per event, okay.
Yeah, we'd have to start another claim and it's, uh, we're just trying to get through this first claim with them, so, yeah. Did that?
I, I.
Yeah, was that what you're?
Yeah, and, and I don't wanna interrupt anyone, but I, I'm just trying to mark off what's been done.
Sure.
And, and if, and if we could take just another minute, hit the equipment portion too, so that I'll know.
Alright, can you roll it? Okay. Yes, all that's been?
All that's been taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
All the equipment, everything?
Everything, yes. And we just, the loan payment's been made on the activity bus, I know that for a fact too, so.
I think we ought to point out, we're up there where it says principal payment?
Yes.
That is on a loan.
Yes.
It's for real, somebody's gonna be accusing you of giving a bonus to the principal out there, that's on the loan.
That's not, that's not a payment to the principal, that's on the. That's on the.
It's a little clarification.
That's on dead, that's on dead of the, uh, improvement of Glade Creek, so, yes. Yeah, that's correct, that's correct.
But anything else?
Nothing.
Yeah, and it's not really on any of this list, but it's, it's there, the auditorium.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd love to talk about it.
Well, I mean, and I don't wanna bring it up because we have the money really for this, but, but it's there and it's, uh, not having the conversation.
I think it'd be good to have a conversation, I mean, let, if you, I mean, I'd be glad to.
Let's start up top, is the roof, was it redone when the seventh and eighth grade or is it?
No, it's still, but that roof's in pretty good shape, we had a guy check it out, it's, uh, we do.
Ten years, what's the age on that roof? Year, six years, eight years ago, some, something like that, anyway.
Yeah, but.
But then I no wonder if you got some, you got the boiler and stuff in there that's been patched and worked and I don't know what its status is, if you have heat in there currently or, or not.
So, you, you've got the old steam, steamers in there, you know, and so you know, you know how old those things are.
Yeah, they were there whenever I was there, uh, let me see. Back whenever ships were made of wood and men were made of steel.
Anytime one of those tears up, you, you can't find parts for it, so we've, our, our maintenance crew has done a fantastic job, let me say that, of patching and wrapping rubber straps around this and that and, and, uh. You know, uh, and it had some damage, it's got some damage from the earthquake, you know, there's one pillar in there that the crack goes all the way from the wall down to the foundation, uh, more than one place, and so.
So, is there any of that six hundred gonna be used to repair those?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, but we, I mean, I, I will, but that's not.
That's not priority.
That's not priority right now, you know, and then, you know, you actually down, going towards boiler, you, the floor is, the floor is actually offset down there, you know, it's sunk, sunk in a few places. Uh, you know, for me, you know, we don't have heating and air down there, we do have heat, but like I said, we're, we're down to three, oh, is it three I'm in there now?
Yeah, it's not many.
It's not many, you know, and so, uh, we got, we got, I say we, I'm talking about everybody in this room.
Right.
We, we need to decide what we're gonna do with that facility, you know.
And then the, what else does it need, I mean, if you were, if you were to go in there and take care of the needs.
Now, I was saying.
Not the wants, but maybe the needs.
Dr. Irwin and her group, friends of the auditorium, you know, they wrote a grant years ago and, and got a donor and, and did a match and. I still have about fifty-five thousand dollars sitting in an account at the central office, uh, waiting to put new seating in that place, but I don't wanna put new seating in there.
Till you get heat.
Till you get heat and maybe air, you know, um, the stage, uh, the stage is up, up to par where it's supposed to be, you know, but. The, the sound system, you know, the, uh, well, now with the cracks and those types of things, um, that, that needs to be repaired, um.
Windows?
Windows, so there's no windows in it, those windows are covered up by a piece of plywood on inside and got a decorative painting on top, on front of those. But really, those windows need to be taken out for energy purposes and sealed up, you know, with brick. Um, again, it's still, it's attached to the high school, so if you have events in there, people are, are free to go anywhere they want to in that school down Sparta, you know, uh, that's one of the issues. But, uh, you know, it, it would be nice if, if we had parking for it and, and, and an entrance for it, but, uh, you know. I don't know what that would cost now to, to renovate, where they, we'd looked at doing that, but, you know, it's seventy. Seventy, seventy-one years old now?
Seventy-two, it was, it was built the year that I was born.
Yeah, and so, uh, you know, I, I just think it's time, we gotta decide, are we gonna, do we, do we wanna keep that? Auditorium, which I think is a shame to lose it, I mean, you, we're, what community you gonna find like this, got a eight-hundred seat auditorium in it, you know, that can, of course, I know it's not, it's not used a lot, but.
I think, I think, I think that could be improved if, if the improvements were made somehow, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Sort of a miracle finding the money to do what it really needs.
Do what it really needs.
That entrance and that parking, the HVAC and then upfitting the stage lights and the, the sound system is really not far from where it needs to be, but it does have some upgrades that should be made to.
Yeah, I just, I've had, you know, I had a sound engineer that said, you know, it, it does need upgrading, but it, and you know, that, just like the curtain in there, it. It needs to be taken off and replaced and painting and, you know, and, and when we had the earthquake, like, the interior of the roof back there on the stage, not from. Out of the wind, but it, at one time before, it had some water damage in there and so a lot of that collapsed back, back in that back corner back there, you know, and so, uh. It's, like I said, it's, it's old and it's cracking and it's got problems and it. It needs some repairs on it, you know.
You know, I, I'd just love to see kind of a, you know, uh, uh, some estimates of what it would take and, and maybe a, a community effort of seeing if there's any way possible we could. Get it where it ought to be, to where it can be used, I mean, cause the school, I think, could utilize it a lot more and then the community as well. But the other, one, one other question I've got is on these estimates that you have, you know, right now, things, building wise, are just going crazy. How are these, how recent are these numbers?
Well, we started, I tell you what, we started building our budget, we started building our budget this year because, um, Mark, last year, you know, we, we met and got together in February, so we, we started working on it earlier, so. I think most of these costs are around December, first of December, is that correct, Mr. Carter?
About twenty percent.
Yeah. So, yeah, that could be, that could be higher.
Well, thank you for.
Yeah.
Running chair.
I, I, when we're talking facilities, I, I know we've talked about it before, but, uh, you know, I think we need to start talking about a high school. As well, I know, I know that's a large debt to be, start taking and talking about and, but, you know. It's time, I, I'm just telling you, it's, it's time to start talking about that and, and, uh, the possibility moving forward of, of what that would look like, you know, that's, that's a. That's another building that's over fifty years old and, you know, the one time bricks were falling off of it and they wrapped it metal to keep them on there and just, that's okay, it's doing good and. I know part of the new wing and the, and the gym is not that, that, that section's not that old, but the rest of that building, especially out in the C T E area, you know, the ag.
Earthquake didn't help none of that.
Earthquake didn't help any of that, I mean, we got, we got walls inside of that, of that area where all those labs are, that's, uh. Another good earthquake, there's some walls that could come down, you know.
It's gonna, I mean, it ain't something that, that we're gonna be able to do, but it's something we need to look for, our, our kids might do.
Right, I mean, you got, if you don't, if you don't plan, and then one day you're gonna have to do something.
I mean, it's not, I mean, it's, it's not a one-year turnaround project, I mean, you know, we need to. You know, we need to get, we need to start getting some designs ready, we need to talk about that, we need to, uh, you know, look at, look at funding, what's coming down the road, if there's opportunities, you know. Is there a bond, is there another bond referent gonna come out of Raleigh, uh, you know, I mean, it's about a five or ten year process. You know, are, are you gonna build right there back on the site, you know, or, or we're gonna search for land, I mean, it's lots of, lots of, lots of ifs that we need.
We're gonna build on the site, where are we gonna put them while we tear down the old building, put up a new? I mean, you're just a bundle of joy, you've talked about a, uh, building that was built the year I was born and I, I was the last class in the old Sparta high school, so. I'm ancient, I guess I need to be replaced too.
I, I think, I think that's what, I think that's what.
We're all showing our age.
I think that's what's good though, about, about having these meetings and, and discussing those issues and, you know, I mean, you know, are we gonna leave it for your grandkids to take care of this problem or?
Well, the, the auditorium, I would lean, lean to repairing it and bringing it up to date because it's been a big part of this community for a long time. Well, the way the government's printing money in the federal level, there should be some money there, uh, nothing else, we'll tell them, we'll house illegals in it and we might get a eighty-six million. The biggest problem that I've heard whenever you run into that, if you go to the historical route, then you're gonna have windows still, because you've got to go to the original.
You can't, you can't really upgrade.
You can't upgrade and things of that nature, so.
The, uh, back to the auditorium.
Yes, sir.
At Sparta, uh, Mark was talking about the, uh, P A system, the sound system. When, two years ago, you still had the Friends of the Auditorium, two or three years ago.
Yeah.
And what, what did they do at that time with an upgrade to the sound system?
The sound system's been upgraded, I can't remember if it was upgraded right before I came into this position or right after, but, you know, when I got here, they were, they were still. Uh, acquiring funds for the seating, well, you know, but the sound system, of course, they built the room back there, uh. They may have bought a few pieces of equipment to go in there, but that, as full, but a fully upgraded sound system, microphones and all that, that, that's not been done since I've been here, but. There, there is, there is a, there is a pretty good sound system in there, Mark, Mark went through that.
I think it was around twenty thousand dollars that they.
I think somewhere around there, yeah.
And then at the same time, there was a large donation for the improvement of the seats and that, that hasn't occurred. But that donation is still sitting there, uh, the, uh.
It's in a separate, it's in a separate fund in the central office.
And that's up in those thousands and thousands of dollars.
I think it's about fifty-five thousand dollars, it's somewhere around there, you know.
So, there, there has been, and there has been a lot of money spent on the auditorium over a period of time.
Correct.
It's just been sort of this group would take it on for a few years, then this other group would, and I believe the last group was the Friends of the Auditorium. And, and they put in quite a bit of money and I think there was a school committee that was involved with the Friends of the Auditorium, recommend how that money was spent.
Well, that, that, one of the recommendations was the seating and so you can't take that money and, and make repairs and upgrades on the auditorium, it's gotta go towards the seating, you know, and then, so, I mean.
I think what, what I'm con, not concerned about, but the, this money for the upgrades of the seats is just. Sitting someplace, it's not in the auditorium where people can use it and I think that's for your next.
Yeah.
Upgrade or?
Well, I, I think you gotta, I think you gotta take care of the, you gotta take care of the boiler system in there first, the heating and air, before you start putting seats in there, you know, I mean, I. I think they both go hand in hand, I mean, it's. It's just, that's just part of it, I mean, why do we wanna put fifty-five thousand dollars of seating in there? And, you know, if we can't replace, if we can't replace the heating and air system in there, uh, especially during the winter months, you, you wouldn't be able to use that at any time.
And the people that made the donation, have they put a time limit or anything on the seats?
No, no.
So, it's not like you're gonna lose it?
No, we won't lose it, no, no, it's basically sitting in a separate account, just like it'd be sitting in the savings account, it's not, it's not going anywhere. It's been designated for the auditorium and that's where it'll be spent.
Thank you.
What's enrollment doing now, is it up, down, over a five-year average or?
For us, it's up, we've, we've gained kids, I know we've, we've, our enrollment's been up for the last two years, uh, don't know about next year yet though. Uh, we just have started, uh, pre-K registration and kindergarten registration, of course, pre-K, we don't, we don't get to count those as part of our, our enrollment, even though we have to serve them and look after them, but, uh, you know, it's been, uh.
If you take care of them, they'll come back and then you get to count them.
Well, I know, and we have taken care of them, I mean, we, we, um, you know, we're, we're allowed at seventy-two slots for pre-K and, uh. We always have people on the waiting list every year, they had them this year. we always have people on the waiting list every year. They had them this year too, so, um, I kinda feel like it'll be the same way next year. I, I don't, I think our enrollment will kinda stay about where it is. We, we haven't lost a lot of kids. I mean, they.
It's just sort of steady.
Yeah.
I was really excited today to learn from Susan Nilo about the, um, the efforts to get an after-school program going.
Yes.
And I think that's gonna be a huge, um, asset to parents and students and, uh, just the whole community in whole.
It, it, as far as I can, I mean, I'm, it, it'll be up and going, so just don't know how big it'll be. It might be a small venture at first, but it's, we got room to grow it, but, you know, we've got a new partnership, Western Youth, and so, yeah, I mean, we've, we've been meeting almost every Friday for the last five, six months and so, and then there is a, with the Twenty-First Century Learning Grant that, uh, we had for a while that was taken away from us, not taken away from us, but not, uh, we weren't given an opportunity to get it, but, but now schools are not going after it and so now it's there and so we're, we're gonna go after that grant. Well, the Western Youth Program's gonna go after it and so that'd be, that, that's why I say we've got room to grow if, if we can do some of that, but this community's really stepped up, uh, big time with, with our after-school opportunities, you know. Last year, uh, the group raised, I think about a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of grants and funds and donations and so, yeah. But I, I, it's gonna, I, I think it's gonna, it's, it'll be even better this year, so.
After-school helps a lot of, a lot of kids, a lot of parents.
Tremendous, tremendously, yeah.
Ed, is that the group that's currently in, doing Watauga?
Yes, uh, they're in Watauga and they are in, uh, just started in Ash County this past year, so, yeah. No, it's a good organization. Been, I've been really impressed with them, so.
I heard number of years that they've been with Watauga, it leaves me, but I, that's good. I mean, cause I know we kinda, I feel like we kinda got sort of burnt there a little bit trying to.
Yeah, we deal with communities and schools.
But I mean, but we, you know, we did it for the right reason, trying to meet the needs.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it wasn't our fault that they, their leadership or whatever happened there and I'm not gonna make, I don't know what actually happened. Uh, one other question, I, I noticed on this list, there's wells, Glade Creek.
Glade Creek, yeah.
Um, what is fifteen thousand? What, I know Glade Creek has kinda had days they, they, when they were, when, before COVID, every once in a while you'd be without water out there is.
So I don't know if any of you know, but at Glade Creek, you know, the wa, the well is, I guess it's a half a mile from the school or maybe a little farther. You know, and it's pumped up to a pumping station and then it has to be pumped on up to the school. So, you know, the last time the pump went out, it took us about three days to get it replaced and get the water inspected and do all those and so, uh, you know, we talked about a lot of things. We talked about a water storage tank out there and we've talked about adding another well, actually, you know. In case that one goes down, we, we switch over to the other well, we repair that well and it goes back and forth, you know, uh, but those, those pumps on those wells, it's pumping so much and, and pumping so often that, uh, you know, the lifespan on a new well now, not new well, but new pump is, well, they tell us about four or five years if we're lucky, so.
So that, but this money is basically for.
Just kinda, yeah, if we, we're not gonna, as needed, yeah.
The HVAC changed out, cause that pump's gonna go out, um, and then we had to pull it this year and they, the labor on it, it's in twenty-foot sections.
You're not gonna put a well at each place for seventy-five hundred dollars a piece?
No.
Okay.
The, that potty is, is close, so the, the pump replacement on those is gonna happen, um, every three or four years and like I said, that expenses went up. It was around ten thousand dollars this year when the one at Glade went out.
That, that well at Glade is, um, it's close to four and fifty feet deep, so, you know, we start pulling those sections out twenty foot at a time and then putting twenty foot back down in there and a new pump and bringing a, a crane up here to lift it out. It, uh, it's, yeah.
Anything else? Conclude?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I said, I, I didn't realize we was doing presentations and I, I thought we was just meeting together to talk a little bit about future needs. Of course, we, we have, but, uh, you know, I really, I really, I really wish we would get serious about thinking about this auditorium and this high school. I think it's, I think it's time and it was needed. You know, I'd love to, uh, love to be able to appropriate some money to, to look at some type of a design or something that, uh, would just tell us what, 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 what's possible, you know, uh, besides buying land, but you know, we, if we built one, I think we could start in a parking lot down there, uh, but there again, where they gonna park and where we gonna put them and, you know, it's lots of, lots of ifs about that too, but, uh, you know, we, it's all, it's, but it, it's not, that's not a cheap expense and it's getting, getting more costly each year, so.
Building material loans, like about thirty, forty percent?
Yeah, yeah.
In a few months.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if this board's willing to, you know, look at something like that here and over the next couple of years, but, uh, like I said, I, I think it's time, to tell you the truth, you know. I do.
Looking at fifty-two years now. Five-year process to go through the planning, cussing, the discussing, that puts it at fifty-seven. That's two years to build. We're, we're close sixty years
Correct.
on the building before we could get them into another one.
That's right. Yeah, it's a big budget getting ready to go through, yeah. If we go and I, I know, I know they're talking about another bond referendum, but again, that, that is money that you can use for construction, you know, but it, it's usually a one-to-one match. So it'd be, you know, if, if we needed forty million dollars, you know, we get, we could get twenty million dollars out of the, out of the bond and we'd have to borrow twenty million to, to match it, but, uh, it's not, at, at least it's not a two-to, it's not a two-to-one match, but most of them's been a one-to-one match.
Well, the interest rates are in our favor right now, so if we're gonna have to borrow, I would, you know, we, we've really gotta look at it. Inflation's gonna kick in. They're printing money like Monopoly, so it, it, pretty soon it will start to hit us. But let's see if there's a bond referendum that comes through that'll affect us, I think.
My class reunion's fifty years this time. We was the first one going into the ninth grade down there, yeah, yeah.
Was the last, you were the first.
Right.
I'm sorry?
I said, there's not a much better place to put our money than our kids.
True.
I'm very proud of Allegheny County Schools this year. It's, it's a very different year and a very stressful year and a very crazy year. But, you know, they've all stepped up and they have fed the kids, they've got the kids where they needed to go. They've, um, you know, offered different programs of learning, whether it was virtual or in-class. You know, they, they have went out of their way to try to help every student and making sure that they had what they needed. If they didn't come to school, they had technology, but I just wanna take one moment and, and really brag on them, all of them, cause they've done a really good job in a situation where you just have to make a different decision you've never had to make every day.
We should come up to the microphone so that it could be recorded, cause they cannot hear you back there. You can praise them all you can, but all they're doing is on, on the other side of that TV screen and saying, what's going on? Welcome, Charlie.
I just wanted to take a moment to say how proud I am of Allegheny County school systems. Um, they have really went above and beyond in this year of change and adaptation. Um, everyone has. You know, they, they have really tried to reach the kids with technology and help the kids that were gonna stay home. Um, offer the kids the ability to come to school, even if it was on a, every other week basis, but, um, I'm very proud of them. That they've really done a great job and I just wanted you all to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else before we close out?
I would, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to encourage us as after budget season, I know that's, that's a lot on the plate, but is to kinda start maybe diving into a, a long-term capital plan or a capital plan of any kind and then kind of include these items potentially in the conversation and see if we can, you know, see what our, our needs are and coming needs are gonna be and try to, try to do a little bit better planning. I feel like we, we do we kinda put off and put off because we can't afford and then when it comes up and, you know, we have to kind of take some knee-jerk reactions financially and then that's not really always the best way to, to go about, you know, appropriating the money. If we had a plan, it would, it would help us. I know the plan's never gonna be an exact, uh, of what you actually are gonna face, but at least if you have a plan, you can have something as a, a guiding, sort of a guiding principle going forward. And, and that would help, I think, future boards to know kind of where we are and maybe where we're headed and, and they can tweak it or adjust it every, how they need to going forward, because this board could never determine what future boards, you know, spend. That's up to them, but at least they'd have some kind of a, a guideline to go by. Right.
Interest rates will go up. Uh, interest rates will go up.
You guys been able to operate any less this year on account of COVID? I mean, schools out and so forth and saved any money that way?
Yeah, we've saved on transportation, uh, those things, uh.
The state pays for that. That didn't help us, right?
It doesn't help us, right, yeah. That's all state funded, you know, uh, as far as, you know, our building's still been open five days a week, you know, still got the energy costs there. You know, teachers, that, but those funds, they're, they're paid, you know, that's, that's all state funded. You know, it's, I mean, we've been, we've been in school since August seventeenth, whether we've had fifty percent of the kids there or not, but, uh, you know, we, we've been in, we've been in school business and functioning as a school system just like normal for, since August seventeenth. There's really not been a lot of changes, you know, as far as those savings go, Bill, you know.
I was glad to see your food delivery, the buses, that was a great thing.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, I mean, we, we, we fed, some weeks we fed about, we, we delivered about seventeen hundred meals a week there for a little while.
Sounds great, good thing.
We, we hope we can continue to do that this summer, so. And that's another, that's another piece too, like, you know, there's a new bill coming out of the House and Senate that, uh, it's mandating we have summer school, but they're not funding it, so we gotta, we're gonna have to.
Imagine that.
So we gotta, we, we gotta find funding for that and so, uh, you know, it's, we, we have lots of needs. I, you know, I, I'll be honest with you, I'd love to, uh, for this group of commissioners and, 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 and our board to, uh, think about maybe a, a small appropriation to, to look at some type of new design for, for the, for the high school or, or, you know, even, even the auditorium repairs. We can, we can bring some people in from the DPI Department and all kinds of instruction. But, um, you know, getting cost, uh, that, they're not really, they're not really for cost. They're more about a design concept, you know, and, uh, but then we'd, we'd have to, we'd have to do some drawings and stuff for, for that, you know, some technical drawings, so.
Can you ask them what the, what the cost would be and come to us and let us know?
Sure.
Uh, it's something to consider.
Here, Will.
Okay.
All right.
Nothing further. I'll turn it back to Donna and she can close out her side and then I'll close out my side. I want to do any comments? Mr. Chairman? What I wanna say is, is I appreciate what you guys doing, your teachers and, and everybody, cause it was a full staff job to get everything together and it's, it's been, y'all done a great job. Nothing further. Call for a motion.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, second.
Second.
Hold the favor.
All right.
Thank y'all.